All right, I'm gonna, uh, call this meeting to order. Um, and we'll start with, uh, the pledge. It just says it on my page. Roll call.
Adam McKnight.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
Rowa.
Here.
Vogel.
Here.
Kinder.
Here. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, um, it looks like we do public comments on agenda items. Uh, Hillary, link?
Thank you. Um, first, I want to thank the city council for holding this hearing and this follow-up meeting and providing us the opportunity to talk to you. So based on the public comments from, uh, on this topic from the last meeting, I just wanted to be sure that we had addressed many of the concerns and questions before you vote. A couple of things I just want to reiterate. Uh, we have never intended for our campus events to compete with anything happening downtown. We remain incredibly committed to supporting downtown and downtown businesses. Uh, our students frankly love going off-campus and going downtown, want to patronize local businesses, and we want them to do so. What we were intending to say, uh, which I think got a little bit miscommunicated or misunderstood, is that we never intend to sell liquor after 2:00 a.m. Uh, that would not be legal, it would not be permissible by the license. However, many of the popular, uh, bars and restaurants and establishments that our students like to go to do close downtown at 8:00, 9:00, or 10:00 p.m. And our students come back to campus, and the goal was to give them a safe and responsible way to socialize and be together. Um, the other piece I just want to reiterate is we're conducting, as I mentioned last time, an examination of our food and beverage program on campus. Um, we have been using our current vendor's, uh, catering license, as we discussed, for certain events throughout the year. Um, pop-up pubs this past year, selling alcohol at some of our football games, basketball games, other campus events as a pilot program. And students, alumni, Meadville community members have really enjoyed all of those, and our intention was merely to do more of the same and not to do anything that we haven't already been doing. Um, so I just want to reiterate, we have a strong commitment to downtown that has never changed, will never change. We do still support the cat-a-bus loop, um, to bring students downtown. And the last thing I just want to point out is, uh, public drunkenness was brought up, and our public safety has run all of the numbers. And in fact, the pub, the cases of public drunkenness over the last nine months, when we've been doing the exact type of events that we're asking for this liquor license to do, have gone down from the previous five years. So, uh, I know that was a concern, so I just wanted to address that as well. I wanted to say, um, thank you all. And again, we're, we're really not interested in competing with anybody, we're just trying to give our students a safe, vibrant, and responsible place to socialize over up here. Thank you.
Thank you, Hillary. Uh, Ron Erwin?
Um, hello, I'm Ron Erwin. A handful of people want you to believe that if you give, uh, them more of your money and some of your freedoms, that they can solve non-existence problems. What am I talking about? Climate action plan. Here's the numbers. World population, 7.9 billion people. U.S. population, 332 million. P.A. population, 12.9 million. Meadville population, 12,415. So that means Meadville's population is point zero, 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 one-five, 715 percent of the world population. Imagine giving a penny to a millionaire and saying, "I want to make a difference in your life." They want you to believe if you purchase green energy products that are primarily made in China, uh, we will save the world. What they don't tell you is that China creates nearly two times the greenhouse gases that the U.S. does. In fact, per capita, the U.S. is fifth on the list of polluters. So here's my suggestion. Have your next meeting on the pile of illegal fill that is behind the Common Roots building, and gaze at the marshland that was created behind three properties. Okay? I keep hearing we're going to solve it. My solution is going to be pretty simple here pretty soon. Seeing that nothing is done about illegal fill in flood-ies areas, I will start filling mine and chase it right back down the road. So that's what we're going to do here. Instead of actually addressing problems that are inside the city of Meadville, you go ahead and chase your imaginary ones instead, and we'll fix it ourselves. March 23rd is when I brought this in the last time. Nothing has been done, even though I sent you in the elevations, went in on my time, did all the elevations, and sent it to Gary the very next morning. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Um, Alyssa?
Alicia.
Alyssa, I'm sorry.
That's okay. My parents for that one.
Right.
All right, so, um, I just want to talk a little bit about the climate action plan. I know I sent you guys an email about some of the public comments that I have gathered, uh, but these ones are my own. Um, so it was stated that passing a climate action plan won't mean that residents and business owners have to participate. However, numerous times the word "policy," "implement," and "action" are utilized. Sentences such as the following are placed throughout in order to understand how the overall revitalization of our already lively and engaged community can take place through energy saving. It is crucial to envision how the metamorphic connection between economy and ecology might be actualized in policy and practice. As an FYI, "actualized" means "make a reality of," and "policy" means "a course or principle of action adopted or proposed by governor, government, party, business, or individual." The climate action plan takes advantage of common sense purchases and cutting-edge policies that our local government is uniquely positioned to implement. The climate action plan is a framework for the development and implementation of actions that reduce Meadville's greenhouse gas emissions. Just a few examples. Meadville's population was 12,415. According to the 2018 census, it is actually decreasing. Per the climate action plan, 20% of our residents are at or below the poverty line, meaning 2,483 individuals fall into this category. Arguably, these individuals could have limited to no access to computers and/or the internet. This climate action plan was posted to the city website. The people it is purported to help could very well have not seen it. Also, according to the census, 14% of our population is age 65 or older, which equates to 1,738. Arguably, some of all, some or all of this group could be also unaware of the draft policy due to not utilizing computers or internet. Your engagement activities were listed as virtual, limiting the attendance to those with access to computers and internet. What percent of the Meadville population actually attended? For those individuals outlined above, if you didn't print the 97-page draft and hand-delivered to these individuals via door-knocking training procedures you have used prior, can you realistically state that these people you intend to help even know a single word in the policy? Per the climate action plan, with many more residents living in near-poverty conditions, climate change is likely to amplify the impacts of these existing inequities. Residents of frontline communities, which often include lower-income neighborhoods, communities of color, immigrants, unhoused people, outdoor workers, people with disabilities, the very young, and the elderly, will disproportionately bear the burdens of climate change impact. Yet, your outreach was done in a manner that excluded them. Costs. Developing coves uses staff time, and time is money. Expanding recycling programs costs money. Turning blighted and abandoned property into green spaces reduces the tax income. Loss of revenue is not good for a city. Carving credit, seeking expert advice, experts cost money. Enact legislation to ensure goals of climate action plan are followed in each phase of all new municipal projects. Increase staff time equals increase in money. Upfront cost has to be paid somehow. A lot of the proposed ideas cost money, directly or indirectly. There's no guarantee on getting grant funding. How many grants would require a city match? Are we going to waste time, money, and effort chasing funding that would ultimately, we would ultimately not receive? Has anyone done the math to find out how long it would take to recoup the investment for each item proposed? You can't offset costs with savings upfront. That isn't the way of the world. The cost is divided over time based on estimated savings. Nowhere in this plan are cost figures evaluated. In conclusion, there should not be a policy that the city council has sitting on their desk to sign into action and implement. This should be left to education and outreach to aid impacted individuals in finding resources to implement these ideas if they so choose. I ask that you please vote no to this climate action plan.
Thank you, Alicia. That concludes the, the public comments. Um, so notice of executive session meetings?
Uh, Your Honor, no executive plus or meetings have been held since the last council meeting.
Okay. Um, approval minutes, April 21st, 2022, for the hearings on the liquor license transfer?
Some move.
Second?
Second.
Discuss? Roll call.
McKnight.
Aye.
Myers.
Aye.
Rowa.
Aye.
Vogel.
Aye.
Kinder.
Aye. Um, approved minutes for the April 21st, 2022 council meeting?
Some move.
Second. Discussion? Roll call.
McKnight.
Aye.
Myers.
Aye.
Rowa.
Aye.
Vogel.
Aye.
Kinder.
Aye. Uh, communications?
Your Honor, I have a, an email communication here from Ms. Moad. Um, as she had stated in her comments, she had forwarded counsel a series of comments that she had collected regarding the climate action plan. She noted that she's just a middleman for the conference, but she felt it was important that they be brought to council's attention and that they be brought in a timely manner so that you could review them before the meeting. Um, the comments are broken down by pros, cons, and additional comments as it related to the climate action plan, as well as some comments relating to the zoning recommendations. There was also included a survey regarding the Allegheny College liquor license transfer that asked for, uh, people to vote yes, no, or maybe. Um, Ms. Moad did note that some people who voted twice and those who did not leave a name were removed. Um, and the results were 82.9% asked counsel to deny the liquor license transfer.
Okay. Um, managers report?
Uh, Gary is going to continue with, uh, his zoning presentation concerning signage parking and non-conformity issues.
All right, counsel, this is the, the last, uh, presentation regarding actual content in the zoning ordinance. Um, there are some items that weren't, that haven't been covered in this, of course, since it is a 187-page document. Um, but I'm trying to hit the highlights. And so, we've gone through some of the major changes that are, that are proposed to, to occur. Um, some of these, what I'm going to talk about tonight, these are all the requirements that, mostly requirements that are already in the ordinance, so I'm going to review some of those. There will be some changes as well, um, but I'll just go through these real quickly. Um, we'll start with signage, then just basically under Article 7, it's proposed ordinance. Um, some of the changes, we're not, we're not, um, so I'm sorry, the next slide, there was talking of transitional districts, business districts. Not really changing any regulations in it. Again, we're changing the names of some of the zoning districts, and this really just, really just changes the names, it really doesn't change any of the regulations. So when you see NC in the heading, it's not, no change. So this is existing, it's not going to change, only thing it's going to change is the name of the zoning districts. Okay? Um, so this talks about, basically about the, the regulations that apply, some of the regulations that apply mainly to commercial areas, if you will. So again, I'm not going to go through all of these in detail. Um, it will be posted to the website, and of course, anyone can stop it at any time, peruse it here, we can get copies to people if they have any questions on what we're looking to do, uh, at any time, but it will be posted to the website as well for people to like, take a look at as they, as they'd like. So next slide, uh, temporary business signs, we're changing this a little bit. Um, basically, we're saying any business can have a temporary sign in addition to any permanent signs. It places time limits on it, depending on exactly where you are. Um, the time limits, uh, both for individual signs and for, uh, the time that a sign can be posted throughout a year. Um, and it specifically talks about, um, temporary business signs, basically limiting what types of temporary signs you can have, um, and where they can be located. So, one, uh, note that we're putting, we're adding in there is the temporary signs will need to have a note on the date of installation so that we can know how long it's been up and, uh, when it needs to become down.
Gary, have a question.
Yep.
If you like, for like my business, if I had a registration sign and it went up for a month, and then it came down, but then I would, could put it up a year later, or is it like a one-time?
Is it at your place of business?
Well, that was an example, because I used to have one.
Right. So, if it's at the place of business, it depends on where, where you are, but basically, um, signs can be up for 90 days, um, individual signs can be up to 90 days. In, in business, in the business areas, it can be, you can change them out. In the resident, more residential areas, you have it basically up to 30 days in a calendar year.
Okay.
To have any sign up.
Okay. And so like the next year, you can put it up again as part of the cycle?
Yes. Yeah, sorry.
Um, is what pulled out here, the ways in which it's different, like this is different? No?
This, this is, this is a little bit different as well. Um, right now, the temporary signs, basically, it says any business can have a temporary, have one temporary sign up at a time.
That's what's on the books now?
Essentially, essentially, yeah.
And, and then the proposal is?
The proposal would be to, to actually more limit, it would more limit in the business areas down to 90 days from 180 days, and then in the residential, the non-commercial areas it would be limited to 30 days in a year, as opposed to the same regulation, 180 days for a sign. It does get kind of complicated when you talk about temporary portable signs, um, that's why I wanted to try to address this.
You, you answered my question on electronic signs in historical districts.
Oh, yes, that's, that's a little later. Skipping ahead.
He just wants to get through it.
I shouldn't, I shouldn't do handouts. So there's no change for the portable signs. Uh, right now, we're thinking, you know, think like A-frames in the rights-of-way, thinking in the B1, the downtown business district. Well, we currently allow these, we don't intend to change that. There are six regulations, um, you'll see down toward the bottom there. I'm not going to read through every one of those, but that is not changing. Um, and then it also deals with public signs in the, in the rights-of-way, of course, as well, other signs that are in the rights-of-way. Any questions on portable signs?
Like a signage board?
Yep. Yep, any, I think anywhere in the, in the B1, well, in the downtown district area, any one, any of the businesses that have sign up in front of their place, that's really what this talks about. So, um, yeah, that's what the, that deals with there.
I hope those like banners, you know what I mean? Like a banner, like a?
On this, on the bit, the, um, those are really more the temporary signs that we're talking about as opposed to the portable. Portable comes, goes in and out, so it goes out when you open, comes back in when you close. Temporary can stay up all the time. And I know it sounds like we're kind of splitting hairs, hairs here, but we're trying to allow businesses to do, you know, to make their promotions and their specials, and get those out there without really cluttering things up too much with too many signs. Okay. In the residential, um, the MU2 and the Diamond districts don't, don't have any changes here. It has provisions for home occupation signs, uh, as well as bulletin board signs and other types of signage for, um, businesses in those districts. That isn't proposed to change. Um, basically, it allows up a sign up to 32 square feet in size for any business in any of those districts. So those are currently, again, the R1, currently they're the R1, the R2, and the Diamond district, which would change to R and MU2 in the Diamond district. That is not proposed to change, though. Again, no change in the, in what's currently the I-3 and I-4 districts, and these are the Allegheny College, the Westbury, the middle school, the high school complex. Uh, basically, any of the signs permitted in the previous slide, plus they're allowed to have, um, uh, two signs per, per, uh, access drive, which do not exceed 64 square feet. So this allows a little bit additional signage for institutional uses, such as the school, such as the college, such as, as Westbury, those types of uses, that's really what this talked about. But that's not, again, that's not proposed to change either. All right, next slide, electronic signs. Uh, we're not changing those. Uh, again, just to recap very quickly, there are regulations on, um, light intensity, uh, the types of animations that you can have, which essentially are zero, you can have, you can have scrolling. And it talks about when, if it's malfunctioning, it needs to be turned off, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, the only change that we're, we're putting in there is basically is to allow, um, electronic signs in that part of the historic, historic districts, it's in bold in your, in your packet, um, allow them in, you know, I'm sorry, allow them in that part of the historic district between, on Park Avenue, north of Cherry Street. And what that looks like is the next slide here, that's kind of tough to see, but that yellow block area, essentially from Walnut to Cherry on Park Avenue, it would allow electronic signs there.
So is the academy in, as a historic district?
It is in the historic district, and it would not permitted, be permitted to have an electronic sign on Chestnut, as currently proposed. There were two requests in, in the last couple of years to have electronic signs in that area. One of them, again, one of them was the, was the academy, and the commission decided that Chestnut, you know, it still want to try to preserve, preserve the feel of it and not have the electronic signs. Um, but, and the other one was essentially the credit union, which is on, upon Park Avenue, just a block south of the fire, fire department that wanted to have electronic sign was denied as well, because it is also in the historic district.
Okay, so there was a difference between electronic signs and, like, conventional sign, like the marquee. I recall we had to act on that, to replace the marquee in the academy theater.
Yeah, any electronic sign needs to go before the zoning hearing board, that's what's called a special exception to get special approval, to get approval from the zoning hearing boards. An electronic sign really is any sign that's controlled by a computer. That's really what it comes down to. It can change what it says at any particular time, and that's really what we're talking with electronics on. Any questions on those?
Can you just, look, I know that there's a map here, can you give me some markers, like place markers around where Cherry Street is, what we're talking about before.
Yeah, Cherry is, um, along, just south of Erie Bank.
Okay, so like the Murphy Forest Building, uh, is that where?
Yes.
Up to, to Chestnut.
Up to, to Walnut, which is where the fire department is.
Erie Bank, Firehouse.
This is an older picture, it does not show Erie Bank.
So the credit union would now be in?
All right. So this, these next few tables are going to talk, they're going to show what is, what are specifically permitted in different districts. This slide basically notes, uh, for what, for the next, for the next slide, some of the, um, some of the specifications for that. Um, anyway, dark fields indicate a sign is not permitted in the district, and there's a lot of information right here, and again, I'm not going to go through every, every bit of it, but along the top, the top columns, you'll see the zoning district, and along the left rows indicate the type of sign, and then, of course, in between in the matrix shows the area and height that are permitted, uh, for each of those types of signs. Now, there's a lot, a lot of them are not changing at all, um, some of them are. Again, I don't want to get into too much detail in it, but this really breaks down by sign, by, breaks it down into informational signs, bulletin signs, we didn't have those before, directional signs specifically called out with sizes, and this really puts into, right into the table, all, all the different types of signs that you can have in, by district. Okay, so that's, that's really what this one does, it's a permanent signs only.
Gary, a question. Would we, not necessarily you, but would we have a rough idea of the cost to applicant and the cost to the city to go through the advertising process and special hearings and all the rest of that? In other words, if someone says, "I want a sign," and it's not permitted, and they have to have a hearing, we have to advertise the hearing?
Any variance or special exception or conditional use, they all have the same process for advertising, for stenographer presence, things like that. The fee for that is $400. That covers all the advertisements, the stenographer costs, some of the posting costs, administrative costs that are involved in it, so it's 400, whether it's a special exception for an electronic sign, whether it's a variance for a sign that they want to be able to use that wouldn't fit into these parameters, it's all $400.
So that includes our advertising costs?
All the costs related to that hearing process.
Thank you.
And first, they pay that? Um, what, what does minimum height above grade mean? What is?
Minimum height above?
Sorry, it's the slide before, and a bunch of them are starred, minimum height above grade.
Um, any sign has to be at least eight feet, so essentially, any kind of projecting sign, if you have a sign coming on over the sidewalk, it has to be at least eight feet above grade so people can pass under it.
Grade just means the ground?
Grade is ground.
Grade.
Yes, sorry. Yep, grade is ground.
Got it.
Any other questions on those? Okay. So moving on to the temporary signs table, um, we, we do have a specific comment that we are not looking to regulate content regarding First Amendment rights, that is, it is course preserved. Um, any non-commercial speech is protected. We can't talk about what people put on their signs, we can talk about the size, we can talk about the location, we can talk about the, the, um, time, place, and manner of the signs, but not what it says. We can't regulate speech. So, there is a specific comment here, we wanted to include to ensure that everyone understood who's reading this, we're not looking to, to tell you what you can say when it's non-commercial speech. Okay, whether it's political, whether it's religious, whatever, we, it doesn't, it doesn't pertain to any of that. So that's what, really what that, that statement says there, just want to make sure that everyone's clear.
So, if someone can put a derogatory sign up in their yard, is that, am I understanding that, or what the city has moved?
I, the zoning can't regulate, can't regulate speech.
We're talking in a zoning aspect right now, right? Like, everything else would be something else. I, I mean, not free speech, right? Like, and free speech is regulated by the, the constitution, and they know, they're, you know, they've got, you know, guidelines for free speech, and that is not, you know what I mean, it wouldn't be zoning.
What about depictions?
Such as? I'll call your bluff, what do you think?
Jim speaks in pictures, so.
I should have had more illustrations. I didn't, I would defer to our solicitor on, as far as, I'm assuming, I'm assuming you're talking about obscene things like that, or you're talking?
Well, that's in the mind of beholder, but yes.
Oh, I'm trying to take that. I would defer to, to Mr. Elizio on that. That was, that was easy. So, yeah, I, 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 I don't even know where to go with that. Does that, I don't know that it happens too much.
That would be a separate presentation on, uh, how, how governments might regulate things like hate speech, or upset me, et cetera. It's, it's really too much for purposes, and it's not really relevant to zoning right now.
All right. So again, a lot of information here, and the next slide here, and that, on the table talks about temporary signs, we talked a little bit before about sandwich signs, freestanding signs, banners, um, some of these are, are considered, um, the sandwich sign could also be considered a portable sign, but it really gets down into the nitty-gritty about real estate signs, wall signs, window, yard, et cetera. And for those of you all asking a blade sign, as such as the sign like that's in front of Wendy's now, now hiring, there's, there's long skinny signs, that's a blade sign. That's contemplated here, would not be permitted where it is right. So this is, again, this is the temporary signs matrix there, so you can take a look at that at your convenience. Any questions on that?
We act by specific complaint as opposed to going out and working?
Both.
Both?
Yeah, if I'm, if I'm out and I see something, I'll follow up with it. All right, moving on to parking. Not too many changes here. Katie, go ahead and share with the rest of the class?
I do not, but thank you for checking.
You're welcome. So, uh, some of the new changes to parking, uh, we're calling in, in the Diamond, Diamond Park area, no access, no vehicular access will be permitted from the street or right away to which the property is addressed, and what that essentially means is that there's to, would not be no new driveways off of the, off of the diamond, no additional driveways will be permitted off the diamond. Uh, the second one, containment, basically says you need to have curbing or bumper stops anywhere that a park, a car could come in contact with a walkway or a sidewalk, you'll see that in some places down on Park Avenue, where the pavement of a parking lot goes all the way to the sidewalk, sometimes they pull a little bit too far forward, hanging over the sidewalk could get in the way of pedestrians. So that would specifically call out if you're going to be, it can, in, in proximity to a sidewalk, you need to put in some kind of bumper stopper.
And that's new?
That would be new. These are, the, all three of these are new here. Uh, the third one, I'll translate as, as briefly as I can, essentially it says, um, if you have a new development and you have the parking lot or any kind of driveway access between the new building and the public sidewalk, you shall provide a designated walkway area from the sidewalk to the building. Think Tim Hortons. You could think McDonald's. Both of those new developments have, right from the public sidewalk, you can, you have a designated area, whether it's concrete or just painted on the sidewalk or on the parking area, goes right to the door. So think that. This would be codified then in the zoning ordinance. We've encouraged new businesses to do that and they've complied generally. But this would codify it in the ordinance to say that if you're coming down the sidewalk, you can walk right in, not have to walk across, you know, parking lot, try to dodge cars to get into it. It's a designated area to try to make it a little safer for pedestrians.
What about containment? What about like Rite Aid where there's like bushes? With that, it's not a bumper, but is that considered containment?
Oh, sure. I mean, I think there's actually a curb there too.
I was thinking like, I was thinking there's some places where you're just like, oh, there's bushes there.
Right. And generally, yeah, with the containment, it's not going to come up that often because we usually require some kind of planting strip around the parking lot that would provide that buffer.
Yeah.
But it could come up with smaller parking lots, things like that, where that screening isn't required or where that planting area isn't required.
Is there a minimum height for bumper guards?
Not called out in here. Usually it's five, six inches. Anything else on that? The next slide, talking about parking area setbacks. This first one is not new. It requires a 10-foot setback for any parking area with six vehicles or more. I should say, there's a hard line in the zoning ordinance and it's as exists today and as proposed. And when you have six or more vehicles, there are additional regulations that come into play. Comes into landscaping, comes into the planting areas, those types of things come in when you talk about six vehicles or more. So that first one there doesn't change. That's existing. The second bullet, talking about in the residential, some of the mixed use, institutional and diamond areas, the parking, any kind of parking area for commercial uses has to be set back at least 25 feet from the public right of way. Okay, so in a lot of cases, that's going to push it behind the building. So you have the building up front and have the parking out back. A lot of times, that's typically what the result will be. And then the third bullet point there basically just talks about the five-foot planting strip that we otherwise require for parking lots with six or more vehicles. That's not new.
I'm sorry. So clarifying question is, you're saying new parking lots will have to be, what is it, with a 25-foot setback from like the road?
From the property line. Yeah, so from the sidewalk. If there's properties that have sidewalks, generally the sidewalk is the front property line. So it'd have to be at least 25 feet from that for new parking lots in certain districts. In the diamond district, in the institutional districts like the college, the hospital, the schools, in the MU2, which are the transitional areas, and ME1, pretty much any residential area that would also apply to have that 25-foot setback. We, in this zoning, we propose to allow shared parking. So allow different uses that may have different peak park usage times to combine into, to share a parking lot. So what it'll do, the slide, the next slide that you'll see is this basically has the requirements by time and day, the minimum requirements of each type of use that we have. So if you look at residential, Monday through Friday from eight to five, you're required to have, you're only required to have 60% of the required parking for that timeframe. And Monday through Friday from 5:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m., when people, most people are home, you have to have, of course, have 100% of that parking required. So what this basically does is allow something like, for example, a residence in a church, a residential use and a church use to share a lot. And that's, it's not going to come up again, it's not going to come up that often because many of the uses you'll see will have similar peak usage times. But for example, you have maybe like a calamar type of use where people, I'm sorry, the apartment building up on Pine, not, there is no church around there, but if it had a church nearby, you could have them sharing a parking lot because they have different peak usage times, you know, potentially. You know, people may not be home at the same time that a church is in service. You know, things like that where it can come into play. Again, it's not going to happen a lot, but it allows that to reduce the impervious surface, to reduce the cost to businesses when they come in to develop a parcel. They don't have to provide quite as much parking otherwise. It just gives it an option. Again, it's not going to happen much, but it gives an option.
So would it open it up, like, and use it opposite? Like if there's a church in a residential area, right? They could rent out parking slots to, you know what I mean? Like, you know, let the use be for the residents there as long as it's from five to, you know what I mean, like that certain time, right?
Yeah, pretty much.
I mean, if you can use one, then you could switch it and use it the other way, basically.
And this is basically just for new development or like change in uses? Like if a change in use of a building would require?
It could if the, it's really meant to reduce the impervious surface of new developments or reduce the costs to new developments. So if you already have the existing parking lot there, then there may or may not be a benefit to eliminating parking for an existing building. But it could, it could.
So if you have a 25, or if you have a parking lot 50 by 90 in a residential area for commercial use or whatever, because the church was next door, you'd have a 25-foot setback on the front, 25 foot on the side?
Be five, or 10 on the side.
10 on the side, even if it's fronting on the street?
If it's fronting on the street, I'm sorry, yes, 25.
25 and 25. So effectively, you consume all of that lot with?
There'd be quite a bit of setback on that.
Parking, or with setbacks. Okay.
Slight tweak to the parking in the front yard areas. Basically, would not allow any kind of parking in a front yard area with any type of vehicle. It would also prohibit a driveway access drive between a principal building and the street. So if you have a house, the driveway couldn't be in front of the house. It could be in front of the garage, if it's an attached garage, but it could not lead up to in front of the house itself, a driveway or a parking area. The intent there is to try to keep the parking off to the side so you have, still have visibility of the house in the front yard there. Planning commission thought that was important to have.
Yes, I'm just trying to think. So nobody could create parking if they lived on a busy street, right? If they just have a nice, long front yard, they still wouldn't be able to create parking in the front, in front of the home?
Right, yeah, between the home and the street. Think of that, that way, yeah, just between that. Now, it can be off to the side, of course, you know, not just, not directly in front of the house itself. So it would be in front of the driveway or if the garage is like to the side. Absolutely have in front of the garage or in front of any area that isn't directly in front of the house itself.
How would this apply to homes with porticoes? Like where I used to live. You have a portico and you have a driveway, but you have two curb cuts. Think 709 Terrace Street, you have two curb cuts.
Oh, where she drive?
Yeah, you have where she drive. No effect?
Wouldn't be allowed.
And this is all on new, new projects? Because we have quite a few that, you know, people park in their front yards that are, you know, made those cuts and made those.
And again, as with any regulation that's proposed here, council has the authority to change that.
Right.
And so if this isn't something council wants, absolutely, we can change that.
Can you tell me, so you said that they thought it was important for people not to, to park in front of their houses? Like what, like why? Just the visibility of the house?
Dysthetics.
Okay.
Dysthetics.
May I give a bit of history? About 50 years ago, there was a problem with cars parked overnight. So the city council outlawed overnight parking on streets. Now think South Main Street, which has huge setbacks. The residents had no driveways. They had plenty of setback between the sidewalk and the street. So they pulled on the street, which created a whole new problem that the council at that time never thought about. So that would be an example.
So then to think backwards on that, we would need to think about, you know, what, again, new construction, right? What effect that would have on our city streets, overnight parking and things like that? Okay, sorry, I just, I.
So that's all I had on parking. Well, again, there's a ton of changes to that. Moving on to a couple of notes on non-conformities. Again, as I had said before, existing uses can stay, existing legal uses can stay. There is no impact on existing legal uses. The first bullet point is not a change. The last bullet point is not a change. The second one, right now, if there's a non-conforming use that had, that is to be, that is removed for any reason, so the building is demolished, you can rebuild as it was before, even if you choose to demolish and rebuild a house. You can meet non-conforming setbacks. What this would do is you'd be allowed to rebuild with those non-conformities only if it's damaged by fire or casually, not by your own decision. So sometimes, actually, believe it or not, we've had a few houses where you have demolition and they rebuild on the same parcel using the same reduced setbacks. In this case, if it's intentionally done, you would have to come into compliance with the ordinance, you'd meet the setbacks as required in the ordinance. You couldn't just, you couldn't use that. It would have to be basically by accident, by fire, or something like that. If you suffer something like that, the ordinance would not penalize you and make you meet the new setbacks. You could build on the old, but only if it's by accident or by fire.
But this is basically the year and the day rule. We call it a year, but you have a year, but the day after it expires?
Right, yes, that's the one. So yeah. Yeah, just a note on grandfathering. If a use, if a non-conforming use ceases voluntarily, and that's the third bullet. If it ceases voluntarily for 12 months or more, that right goes away and then you have to be in full compliance with the ordinance. Now, if it ceases voluntarily, that means you intend to stop that use, okay? Not that, just because it's vacant. If you intend to stop a use or intend to do that intentionally, obviously, then that use goes away after a year. Okay? So I think that's what Council Monroe is alluding to. Now, if there is a fire or something like that, you do have to rebuild within 12 months. You'll see that in there. And you can still use the same non-conformities as well. So really, the only change in this section here that we're talking about is removing the allowance that if you voluntarily knock your building down, that you can meet those non-conformities. If you voluntarily do something like that, then you have to come into compliance with the ordinance. That non-conformity goes away. Which actually brings it more in line with most of the other zoning ordinances out there. Ours was pretty liberal when it came to allowing people to do things like that. And not to say it's a bad thing, it's just it was written that way. Did come into compliance with more of the other ordinances that are out there. Any questions on that?
Actually, Gary, just quickly, I'm sorry. If, let's say somebody, you know, buys a property, it's in bad shape, right? Like they buy a property that hasn't been used a long time. They go to fix it up, they realize that it can't be, right? Like it's just, it can't be, it has to be torn down. Is that still one of those, right? It's not, it's not by accident, but they, you know, to get it, to be able to use it, right? They have to knock it down and rebuild. Is that, you know, that's not, it wasn't burned down, it wasn't an accident, it was, you know? You know what I mean? Like with?
That would be a decision that the owner would make, so it would have to come into compliance with the ordinance. It wouldn't be grandfathered if it's a decision to knock it down.
But then they could come in and pay $400 and see if they can get it?
They could seek a variance.
Yeah, variance, okay.
You can always seek a variance.
Yeah, got it.
Any other questions?
Sorry.
Okay. So non-conforming lots. So if you have two lots that are smaller than they need to be, we have minimum lot size requirements in the ordinance that a new lot would have to meet. Existing lots are exempt from that minimum lot size, of course, because they already exist. So if you have, if you own two or more of those non-conforming lots and they're next to each other, we under the zoning ordinance consider those to be one lot. Okay? You can't sell them individually. We consider them one because they're already in joint ownership. So a lot of times, people will want to build, put an addition onto the side of a house that would actually, wouldn't meet the setback from that neighboring lot. Or they might want to put a shed on that neighboring lot to use for, to serve the main house. Right now, we allow them to do that just because we do. Okay? What this would do is basically say, if you want to put that addition on that would encroach on that side setback or put a shed on the neighboring lot, in order to ensure that they're not, they're never sold separately, again, we would require them to be consolidated in some way. Okay? We do have that requirement already in a separate part of the ordinance, but basically this would allow a consolidation deed through the county process or a subdivision or covenants placed on those properties, basically, that ensure that those properties will never be sold separately. Essentially, it just creates one larger lot and eliminates that middle lot line and making sure that it won't be sold separately. It just kind of clarifies the process and makes sure things are taken care of in that respect. I know that may not make a whole lot of sense, but if you read that one or two more times, it'll probably start to make a little more sense to you. Okay. So. So these last two have to do with residential and commercial buildings that don't meet the front yard setback. So basically what this does is we had this actually come up with the Grove Street Hospital. They put an addition on a few years back. The existing building was probably about 10 feet from the sidewalk. And they wanted to basically extend, put an addition on extending that same setback along the sidewalk. So the same 10-foot setback, which is a non-conforming setback, it's too close to the street. Any new construction has to meet the setbacks. What this basically would do would allow those types of additions to occur with up to 50% of the bulk of the existing building. So it limits the size of the addition that can go on, but allows them to continue that same front line along the front, a front property line, basically along the street. So it allows 50% for an existing residential building and same thing with an existing commercial building. Basically allows them to do that. It makes it a little simpler for them, a little easier to get that taken care of because in most respects, they're going to get the variance anyway. They're going to be able to show that there's a hardship. So why put them through that process if they don't have to? You know, if they're probably going to get the variance in the first place. So that's what these two new requirements go and do, what those do.
And this is, this is just the same thing?
Right.
Yeah, one's residential. Yeah, first one's residential.
It's got fewer than four units and then?
Yep, yep, and the second one's commercial. And that's all I have. Again, there's a lot there, but that's all I have. The next weekend, we'll be talking about the comprehensive plan update and how that, essentially the recommendations, some of the recommendations from Miamiville would be combined into the existing city comprehensive plan. That's what that's going to deal with. And of course, always available anytime. Give me a call if you have any, you need clarifications on any of this stuff. None of it's simple.
Do we have a drafted plan? About some of the public outreach sessions that proposal can start this month and next?
No. Nope, that, it may be just June where we see that correctly. Haven't had a chance to get anything scheduled though yet. Working on it.
Can the engagement sub, maybe you could help with something?
Your honor, the only other thing under the manager's report is just to inform council that the city's fire department was the recipient of an Act 10 EMS grant through the state in the amount of $37,237.
What may that be used for?
This one is specifically related to COVID. This was some extra COVID money that the state had. They had $25 million that they dispersed to qualifying municipalities. So this could be used for a number of different things as long as it can be tied back to COVID.
For this fiscal year?
Correct.
How did we tie it back to?
So the grant was a, if you apply, you receive a portion of it kind of grant. So there was no narrative required as part of that. Chief Wiley and I are meeting to try and discuss how this could possibly be used.
Great. Council's subcommittee report, housing and economic development. We had our meeting last week and are doing more research on some of the questions we had. We had a group of 10 questions that we went through and just giving some more clarification on those. Community engagement?
No update, we've got a discussion and comments.
And finance?
A couple of items. Gretchen had had some questions that she posed regarding a couple of initiatives. It's my understanding that staff is researching those initiatives in an ongoing fashion. Now, little analysis. The projected budget deficit for next year is estimated at about $800,000, which averages a daily deficit of $2,191. Now, when we approved a bond issue to capitalize funding for various city pension plans, what we effectively did was fund 33 days of budget shortfall. And tonight, a little later on, we're going to be asked to consider an insurance proposal. By the way, all the carriers have a rating from Vests of A+. So, which is the best rating there is. No pun intended. But that is their highest rating. Our finance director took some initiative. Our finance director took some initiative, and he sought proposals, and he saved us about $17,000. In evaluating the proposals, he questioned the need to have an appraisal performed and selected a company that does not require that, which saves the city money. And he noted that one of the finalists had a higher deductible than the other. So, thanks to his astute observation and negotiation, he got the insured with a lower price to lower the deductible and lower the premium, so now there's about a $19,000 savings. Better coverage, lower deductible, lower premium. Thanks to Tim for a job well done, which is why he's not allowed to retire again. So if Council agrees to that action, the savings on the insurance will be able to fund the daily deficit for another nine days. That's the good news. That means we only have 323 days of deficit to close. That concludes my report.
Thanks, Jim.
I did not pay him.
I was skeptical on that, Tim. Thank you, Tim, for your good work. All right, old business, authorities, boards, and commissions.
No real updates. The application period is open until May 11th. We've received a handful of applications so far, so we'll look forward with that process, depending on what the appointment policy looks like.
All right. All right, old business, discussion, motion, climate action plan.
Your Honor, we were wondering if Council would like to go through the staff comments that you received via email.
Here we go. See if it comes back in? Yeah. Sorry, sorry.
I would like to see staff comments read into the record.
This was primarily Gary's comments that were embedded in the document itself. I read them, so I don't need to give them again, but I'm also open to...
It's up to Council.
I think Gary should do a presentation. You haven't been scared to even say anything, Gary. Larry, what do you think?
Oh my gosh, are you sure?
Why don't they, I mean, you don't have to be the one reading, right?
Do we have a summary of staff, that just may be a summary of the comments?
The only thing is, there were specific questions. I wasn't sure if Guy was here tonight to answer any of those.
Specific questions for Guy, is that what you're thinking?
I mean, there were specific questions, so on page 32, question was, you know, what is Act 129 that's referenced in the implementation considerations? We're not familiar with that act. And then there were some other questions concerning, you know, what types of codes? This would be on page 34. You know, there's some things in here that would require us petitioning the state in order to change some items. So, just wanted those to be aware, Council.
Yeah, these were, I mean, these were posed to the task force before, actually, before it came to Council. I hadn't heard back on anything, any interest in any of those, but we had reached out a little bit just to say, okay, we're talking about improvements to rental housing was one of them, improved energy codes to rental housing. So a couple of the questions I had there were, how do we do that? You know, how do we, is it an educational thing? But they talked about actually doing it, so how's that paid for? One of my major concerns would be, how do we do that without personally benefiting land, individual landlords over other landlords or under occupied houses? Questions there. And then how would we do that from an enforcement standpoint? Building code doesn't require it, building code doesn't apply. How do we do that? You know, so some of those kind of questions came into play. Another one was using storm water for gray water use, for toilet use, things like that. Again, plumbing code doesn't permit that. We actually have to go to the state to, actually frankly, I don't know how we would do that because we're actually going less stringent than what the state code says, and we're not allowed to do that. So there were just kind of questions like that, and there must have been, I don't know, 50 or 60 of these things that were, that we had talked about. Just wondering, how does that, how is that done? How do you envision that being done? Because I think just some of them just can't, flat out can't be done under the code. Some of the other ones, we're talking about encouraging rain barrel usage, and maybe giving residents, homeowners, credits on their stormwater fee. Some questions on that is, okay, how do we verify that it was done? How are we verified it's still being maintained? And how are we going to pay for that? Because if we're going to give people credit on their stormwater fee, then at the same time, bringing in another program, or giving the staff additional things to do, how are we going to pay for that as well? So, those were just a couple of the ones that I could think of offhand, that just, in my mind, it kind of begged, begged some questions, some additional thoughts, you know, additional, maybe a little bit of fleshing out a couple of things, a couple more, just to know, okay, that's what you meant, or this is how we plan to do it. I just, I didn't see it in here, and I had some concerns that we have something in the plan that maybe we can't do, and I'd hate for that to happen. That's kind of where I was coming from with some of the comments that I made. And again, those aren't all the comments, but they're the ones that are at the top of my head. I do have serious concerns about improvements, improvements in energy efficiency in housing. I mean, not, of course, it's a great goal, but how do we do that fairly without benefiting individual people over other individual people, and frankly, benefiting businesses? You know, because it's rental houses or businesses, and you know, how do we benefit some business centers and not other business centers and not under occupied houses? So, yeah, again, without going through the entire document, those are the ones at the top of my head, that I think, you know, Guy or Dave or someone would be able to answer. I'm not sure if anyone else can answer those.
So we do have Matt here, who's also part of the task force. I don't want to turn it over to you when you maybe weren't expecting to answer questions. And I guess I do just want to say, not to dismiss these concerns, Gary, because I think these considerations are really important and will be really helpful in implementation and thinking about how we carry this out, right? And so, the consideration that's been given, I think, is really helpful to a body that would implement and take into account, right, a lot of these, the questions that you're raising. So I think that there's, I guess I just want to open up this possibility that, right, we might not answer all of these questions now, but like, part of the process of implementation, we need to answer those questions.
I mean, I'm happy to speak a little bit, if that would be helpful. So, the plan itself, and what the task force did with it, was to establish an overall goals for the city, and then to embed some examples of actions that have been taken in other communities. There's nothing in the plan that the city is committed to necessarily in particular. And so each of those proposed actions would be something that the, my understanding is that one of the next steps would be to develop an environmental advisory council, and then a lot of that work to answer a lot of the questions that you just raised would happen in that body. Some of those examples that are outlined in the plan might not prove to be feasible for Meville. It was meant to show some of the possibilities that could be considered, but then ultimately, City Council would have to vote on any particular policy that would forward one, well, any of those proposed actions. And so, it's meant to give more of an idea about the range of things that could be considered, not to necessarily commit the city to doing every single one of those actions that are proposed in the plan. And that's true of all climate action plans, by the way. This is, this is something that you would see in virtually any community that has adopted one of these kind of plans.
You worked on other community plans, is that correct?
What's that?
Have you worked on other community plans?
I've not done a climate action plan for another city.
Oh, I thought maybe, I'm sorry.
I've studied them, but I haven't done one, yeah.
So, I am feeling inclined, again, like, again, I don't do this to dismiss, like, the considerations of staff. I think it is really valuable to move forward with and help inform how it's implemented, but I am inclined to move that we adopt the climate action plan. Just that as a motion.
You know, I think, and I've been thinking about this, the climate action plan is a good thing. My concern is, you know, we're looking at things, I think, kind of putting the cart before the horse, before the cart, because if we do all this, we're losing, like someone pointed out, we're losing population here, we're losing jobs. You put, invest all this money, we're going to have a town with no jobs. People are leaving. We need, I think we need to pay more attention to bringing business and revenue to here. I'm sorry, I, you know, I've got a lot of people asking me, what are you doing about jobs? We've had companies closing, contracts being lost, people are out of work, and these people wanting to know, what are we doing? They can't afford to move. A lot of them are senior citizens that work part-time. What, they want to know, what is City Council doing to bring businesses here?
Well, on that note, I know there are quite a few, you know, especially part-time jobs here with lots and lots of signs up. And as far as bringing people into town, right, we need to make sure that we are, that people want to move here, right? And that is making it a better place, making it a place they can see raising their children, making sure that our, you know, small businesses are comfortable here, can come here, or it's easy to do a small business, our downtown is being revitalized, right? It's a beautiful place, it's a beautiful thing, we've got a lot of work to do, right? Because for a very long time, we didn't do that. We didn't benefit, it wasn't a benefit for people to move in, it wasn't a benefit. That's why they were moving out, right? And that's why we're trying to change the narrative here, right? And change what Meville is about, because it wasn't working. So now we need to change it. And having things like, people understanding that there's education here, and that we care about our future, we care about our environment, right? That is a big deal. Having people come to Meville because they know that the people in Meville will embrace them no matter who they are, who they love, you know, what color they are, that's important. And safety and feeling a part of the community and being a community is, that's what we need to do. We need to make it easier for, yes, absolutely, for small businesses to come in. I think that we're, you know, Meville is, it's a beautiful place, and we are changing that narrative, right? But it takes work to change the narrative, and I think that things like having a stance on the climate, right? A city having a stance on the climate is also a big deal, right? So, I mean, as far as some of the jobs, you know, that's something we're working on, and I do see a lot of help on its own. I think that what, I mean, I don't want to go through everyone, right? But I don't walk into a business that doesn't need help, right, at this point. And I know what you're talking about, maybe, you know, I don't know if you're talking about, like, factory jobs or...
Employment that is sustainable for a family.
Right.
And you're not going to get that, at McDonald's, we need, we need to bring factories or something either, and we're not, you know, I, don't get me wrong, I think the climate plan is a great idea, there's some things from it that we may need to or could use, but I think we need to just look at both hand in hand.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
I just, I just don't think we are doing enough to bring jobs here.
So I agree with you, Larry. You know that I do. And I, but I think what I'm hearing you say, right, is that we need to do both things. Right now, we don't have a plan in front of us to bring jobs to the city. We can work on one, and if a task force of citizens wants to spend two years working out a plan to bring jobs here, that's great, but what we have in front of us is a climate action plan that's been developed over the course of two years by volunteers, right? Who save the city money. We haven't spent money on doing this, right? Because this volunteer task force has taken it upon themselves to do, to do this work because they're concerned and they want to see this happen. And I think that, like, you're right, we need to do both things. What we have in front of us tonight is a proposed plan for the climate piece, right? Move to the other one.
I reiterate my earlier position. Climate action plan ought to be regional or county-wide at the very minimum. Everything in life is a competition, including where businesses locate, where people choose to build. And given the choice of building in an area that has more restrictions versus less, people are going to build where there are fewer restrictions, they're going to build where their taxes are lower. So if we operate in a vacuum and say, we have a climate action plan, you're going to stymie development. Are there climate initiatives that need to be taken? Absolutely. If you want to increase the stream of recyclables to include electronics, I'm with you. But some of these items in the climate plan have the most tenuous connection at best to climate action. A rental inspection has nothing to do with climate action. And there were some other comments that have been in this, in this proposal that are the same way. They don't belong in the climate action plan. So, excuse me. For those reasons, I strenuously oppose this, and we have not had enough chance for the public to weigh in. I believe members of Council did receive an email from a former Council person expressing some concerns about climate action plan, and members of the public have come to the same thing. Policy, you know, we say it's voluntary, but the word "policy" keeps appearing time and time again. And so, if you adopt this, down the road, someone's going to say, well, this is our policy. No, this was not intended as a policy. This was maybe intended as an aspiration. There's a big difference between the two. So, I'm not in favor of the climate plan as submitted, and I don't think we've had enough time for the public to weigh in on this. I don't see the need to rush to judgment.
I mean, what I'm hearing is language here, a lot of, you know, words, because we've said loads of many things, right? So some of the language you're opposed to...
I'm opposed to some of the language. I'm opposed to the fact that it is only the city of Meville in this climate action plan.
Right.
So if you want to drive wage earners and homeowners out of the city and increase your number of renters, this would be a good way of doing it. If you want, on the other hand, if you want to attract people to the city, take a, take a choice. You have two similar homes. One is $1,000 less in taxes than the other. Which you're going to buy? Over the course of 30 years, that pays for a lot of additions and improvements to a house, or funding for a retirement account, all going to taxes because we have higher costs. If you spread that risk around among at least a school district, preferably a county, possibly a region, then you are at least closer to being competitive with other areas.
Well, I guess, you know, I understand Jim's point of view about competition, but I also think we live in a community where collaboration is really important and showing that we care, and I appreciate, like, Alicia's comments, that we really do all care for the environment. And I do think that we need to work on the language, there's some things in there, because obviously, we want people to have their voices heard. So I do feel like, I would like to move forward on the plan, but I think we need to have a session or something where we really like to look at the language, where we can, you know, map, like, this is intent, this is an example, this is not a policy, this is like an example of maybe we could do the gray water, you know, that kind of thing, where I think that it seems like there's a lot of, we all have the same value, but we're just trying to work out the logistics of how to get there. So, I mean, I do feel like we need to probably look at going through that and resolving those issues, because I think that we are trying to build a better Meville. I do disagree, I think that we have to start somewhere, you know, that's how you create change, even if it's just starting with the city of Meville, so people like, this is a great place to live. So, that would be my two cents word. So, that would be my two cents word.
So if we move ahead, this would be to move to just as-is, we're past, we're accepting this word for word tonight?
So there's a motion on the table to adopt as-is. There would need to be a second. If there's no second, then the motion dies for lack of a second.
So another point I want to make, and a point I want to underscore, the, one point I want to make is in reference to this not being the role of local government, maybe our government. I think, you know, people can think what they want about the role that they think government should play in their lives, but I think as elected officials, it's our job to look out for our community and for its future. I think the plan in front of us is a plan like lots of other municipalities across the state are making and adopting. It's a state priority, as Guy mentioned in our study council session, which was intended to kind of be a deep dive, right? There's a state climate action plan that encourages municipalities themselves to craft and adopt their own plans. And they're making this possible through the local climate action program, which is what we went through, our task force went through, to develop this plan. Other municipalities that are doing it, City of Easton, City of Shamoken, Beaufort Borough, Forest Hills Borough, Havreford Township, Indiana Borough, Middleton Township, Millbell Borough, Mon Hall Borough, and the Borough of Etna. And then there's also 28 additional plans that are currently under review and in progress, ours is one of them. I think that if other bodies of government, county, French Creek Council of Governments, or other municipalities want to join, they're welcome, right? We can expand, and we can bring in new partners. That excites me, I think that's great. I'm not a county commissioner, though, right? Like, I'm on the city council, and that's the kind of level of change, right, that we can make, right? So we can expand, and we can bring people in. But what I think we can't do is wait. I've learned after two years on council that waiting on something means you just don't take action, right? You voted down just by deferring it. And that's been my experience, maybe I'm jaded, but that's, that's how it's gone down. That's the point I want to make. The second point that I want to underscore, again, I think this plan may be imperfect, but, right, it was a plan that was developed, again, by volunteers who went through a year-long process, again, with the help of the state. The second year of the two-year was, was going out into the community and getting public input and feedback. And I just want to, like, underscore that those volunteers did that because the city said, okay, we'll do it, but we're not putting any staff, time, or money behind this, because we don't have that capacity or those resources. So there's been this recognition of, right, scarcity of resources on the city's end from the beginning, and yet these volunteers continued to dedicate themselves and their own time over the course of two years to do that. And, you know, for me, I think like that's the kind of place I want to live in, is a place where, like, residents, if they're dedicated and they, again, make a plan over the course of two years, they can put that plan in front of their city council, right, for review and adoption, and that can kind of become, right, a plan for their city's future. I think, I think that that's what we want to see. Appreciate staff's comments, which I think will be helpful in implementation. I stand by adoption tonight.
I would think that at the very minimum, we should dedicate a meeting where there's only one major talk. Tonight, there are four, at least four major topics that are kind of covered in one meeting. And that is not going to do justice to either zoning or climate action, or any of the other major items we have on our agenda.
Okay, so that, I will, the study session last month, is it last month? Was dedicated to the climate action plan. Do we want to carve out another study session for that purpose? Obviously, it wasn't enough, right? Folks aren't feeling ready. Like, again, I still, I stand by that motion, I think we should vote on it tonight, but, but like, I guess I'm asking, like, what does that look like? Jim, does that look like...
Study sessions are at noon, and people work, so they can't attend.
Sure, I will, okay, go ahead, go, you finish your point.
So, my point is, we should devote a council meeting in the evening televised with plenty of notice to the public to come and express their opinions on climate action. And go through this thoroughly. I still have severe reservations about it, but at least the public would have time to weigh in. I would hope that we could get some people who are, among other things, builders, appraisers, real estate brokers, financiers, people who know about land values and land use in general, and in the city in particular, and what the effect of more regulations would have. I'd like to have them weigh in. We could invite them specifically, or just put out a clarion call for that. And again, plenty of time to have people, I know one person wanted to be here tonight, two or three wanted to be here tonight, and they couldn't because they had conflicts. So we need to give enough notice. I'm not saying do it the next meeting, maybe the meeting after that, to give plenty of notice for people to say, yes. It's going to be on a Wednesday evening, it's going to be in June, we're going to take action.
First, I'm gonna have, Gary, I know we spoke briefly about this, and kind of the definition of what it was, could you go over that?
Sure, I think you touched on that a little bit, and you have comments at the prior meeting and at this one, that this is, it's titled the Climate Action Plan, it does have words like "policy" in it, which have concerned, concerned some members of council. But as Councilwoman Vogel indicated, you've referred to it as a set of goals for the city, I believe, right, as the plan, and that further action items would have to come before council. So perhaps a tailoring of, at whatever time council believes appropriate of the motion to include language like that of what this is, it's a set of goals, maybe that makes members of council more comfortable, maybe not, to second this, or maybe others want to continue to focus more on it. But that's, that was just my initial reaction to the, to the motion as presented, that it doesn't include that clarifying language, which I have heard you all say, that this is a set of goals, you're looking to move it forward, that might help with the motion.
Okay, amend my motion to change the movement to adopt the climate action plan as a set of goals for the city of Meadville. Is that what you're thinking?
I mean, I just, I wanted to, because we've said it, and, and a lot of times, I don't think it goes over as, as strongly as it does if our solicitor says the same words. So I just wanted to make sure, you know what I mean, like...
I'm just trying to answer your question and clarify.
Yeah, no, no, and I'm saying that you, you just carry more weight, right? Like, especially when it comes to legal lease, and, and, you know, if we need a new title, we can make it the Meadville Climate Set of Goals Plan for 2022. And if that, if, you know what I mean, if that helps, I think it helps. But I, I know what, what this is, right? I know that this is not to make taxpayers pay more money, I know that it is not. It is truly a set of goals and a stance for the city, you know, a mission statement for the city to, to really put forth its best foot forward, and to, again, say that we are dedicated to our city, to our planet, to our country, right? Like, to make it a better place, and maybe make it last longer. If we need better words, again, because, again, like I said, words mean things, then I'm not opposed to that, right? We've been getting great comments, people have been emailing, right? They've been coming in. And as much as I, I put weight on all the careers that Jim has mentioned, and those people I also put a lot of weight on, the people who live here, right? And reside here, and buy here, and stay here, regardless if they're renters or owners, because they're in our city, and they sometimes own businesses and they sometimes don't, they just work here. They walk around town, they, they live their lives here, and I think their, their opinions are just as important. And, and they've been involved in all of the things that has been going on in the last two years, right? We're not talking about the last couple of weeks, we're talking about the last two years things have been going on. And I've seen these people at Seventh Saturdays, I've seen them at different events, I've seen them willing to go and speak to whoever, right? So whoever wants them to come and talk, these, again, are volunteers that are taking their time out, their precious time, you know, something we have very little of, and working for Meadville. So, again, if we need to take a meeting and check on this wording, I'm willing to do that. And maybe changing the title, because that it seems to be like a hang-up here, then I figure we can do that. We will be accepting all the emails, Alicia has emailed us every week, right? She's, she's putting in good work, too, right? Like, we're, and she is a volunteer of the community that is, that is putting in good work. So let's, I'm gonna say a work session, because it seems to me that we have agendas that are page after page after page long, and I can't imagine that we have a city council time that we can only carve out for one issue, right? Like, we've got a million things to do, and, and I, and I don't, I don't say let's put this off until next month, or the month after that, or the month after that, right? I want to get some things done, I want us to think very solemnly, I want us to keep taking our emails, and, you know, and listening, and then moving forward. So what I'm gonna propose is maybe carving out time at the next work session, and really getting into this verbiage, right? And changing some of these words, and changing maybe the title, and then, and then moving forward. So I don't know how everybody feels about that. Just use my long words.
Does that mean the next, next week?
Yeah. I mean, what's on, what's on the agenda for next work session, do we know?
The plan was to have a discussion about grants.
Oh, we need that. Yeah, we need that, we need that. So I, I mean, I don't know what everybody's thought is on that, but I just know we're not gonna have a city council meeting at six o'clock that has one thing on it, right? Like, I don't think we're, we're gonna have that anytime soon. So we need to figure out what, what we're gonna do there.
You can still have, I mean, you can still act on what I'll call non-controversial business, like repealing a curfew. We have time for that kind of stuff, that routine stuff, but it's just tackling three or four or five major initiatives in one meeting is counterproductive and not equitable for any of them.
We do plan our agendas ahead of time. And as it stands now, the first meeting in June does not have any major action items on it.
The first meeting, and we can... I mean, if we want to move our vote, or our, you know, motion to adopt climate action plan until June, what are, you know, to move that to the next, to the June meeting, the first June meeting. And then, in the meantime, we would need to, you know, I mean, we're gonna need to individually go through this and change these words as, do you know what I mean, like, because we don't have another study session, we don't have time or the energy. So I know you work on things like that, too, right? Like, so you can submit your changes, right? Larry can, and we would need to have these done and ready for staff for that June meeting. I mean, is that, is that what, what we're looking at?
I'm gonna write this down.
I, I don't think you will, Jim, I feel like, I feel like you could do it. What is everyone feeling?
Like, are we looking to discuss further at the June meeting, or are we looking to...
I've been saying we're looking to adopt the June meeting, so that the work that needs to be done, the verbiage, the things that people are concerned with, we're gonna need to do...
I don't think it's just verbiage. I think part of it, as Jimmy even said, it's some of the things that are applicable to Meadville, some of the things aren't. I think maybe that's something we need to, at least everybody be on the same page and know, okay, yeah, this is something that we shouldn't try, or it's not gonna work.
Right, and that's what I'm talking about, yeah.
Yeah, there's a lot of things...
So Jim has concerns, and then you can put your concerns in, right? And you can read it, and, and put your concerns in, and then we'll, you know, submit it to staff, they'll let us know what to do.
These guys, I think with Guy and someone here at that meeting coming in June to answer questions that has the knowledge about it, I think that's important. Have, just me reading it, there's things that I don't understand, and if I have no one to ask, or if they're not here to explain it where I understand and the rest of the public, then it's, it's a mute meeting. I think they need to be here so we can ask questions of them and get clear understanding what's applicable, what's not, what, if there's cost, if there's grants, things of that nature. We mentioned that there are grants, like the young lady said earlier, are these grants a one-time thing? Later on down the road, how is this gonna be funded? Where's the revenue coming from for that? These are questions that I don't feel comfortable voting on until I know that and understand that.
Is, is our last study session, that, I know it was life strength, right? Like, when Guy came and did his presentation. So is that somewhere that we can go back and reference?
It is, yes.
Okay. Plus a do-over. I spent another hour with Guy, hearing the presentation again.
Yeah.
It was reposted, so it was oriented right.
So there's a couple of presentations that we can all look at, and we can, and we can take into account, along with the public, right? Like, everybody can look at them, because they were posted, and, because we did have him come and do, do that, and then he answers questions at the next meeting. And then if there are more questions on top of those things, right? Because he, he, I think that they were pretty clear on, you know, where, if we wanted to go after a grant, right, that they would, where that would come from, that they're working with the state, that, that, those things. So I say that, again, in this time, this extra time that we're giving, we should go back and, and look at those things. Look at his presentation, look at the last meeting, and really get comfortable, and then if there's anything in addition, right? And we'll ask Guy to be there at that meeting in case we need anything clarifying then, too. But to ask him to do another presentation, I don't think that, you know what I mean, like, he's done two, I don't think. But, you know, we've got someone here who's answering questions tonight, right? And then, and the last meeting, and the last study session. So, yeah, let's get, I guess, intimate with this climate action.
We're going to need some staff time. This is 97-page document, 97 pages. I think we probably need a staff person, I don't know who would be available, to get the individual comments and concerns of council and codify them. And members of the public also, so that we have a thorough vetting of the plan and the concerns that are pre- and raised.
Okay, so let's, let's put a timetable on that, so by next meeting, we'll have our concerns in, so that we can give staff the time. Okay, so we've got two weeks to get our concerns and our, our change of verbiage and a change of title in. And then we'll have two more weeks to, to give staff time. And then we will revisit this on the, at the first meeting of June, and we will, Katie, make sure that, you know, it's one of the only actions on the agenda, or close to it. I know that's very difficult, and, and, along with, you know, we have our public sessions for zoning and things like that in June also, so.
All right. We should just send our, with Marian?
Yes, yes.
Two weeks.
Two weeks.
Everybody read it.
Two weeks, everyone.
I would even say the public, like, I really appreciate your comments. Yeah, so please.
Here's my comment, I really applaud you guys. You're working at it.
Two, so everyone, two weeks. All right.
We're all right.
If you're a public comment, you spent over a half an hour discussing something that affects places, and you didn't even acknowledge the illegal film. Your job is to represent taxpayers.
So, thank you, Ron, again. Okay, so, ordinance, third and final reading, repeal Article 709, curfew.
Seven...
We're ready to do it, Katie, good.
And ordinance of the city of Meadville, Crawford County, Pennsylvania, repealing Article 709 of the Meadville Municipal Code entitled "Curfew in Its Entirety."
Second. Discussion? Vogel.
McKnight.
Aye.
Myers.
Aye.
Rea.
Aye.
Vogel.
Aye.
Kinder.
Aye.
Okay, third and final reading, repeal Article 305, circuses and menageries.
An ordinance of the City of Meadville, Crawford County, Pennsylvania, repealing Article 305 of the Meadville Municipal Code entitled "Circuses and Menageries in its entirety."
Motion? Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Are you sure this doesn't prevent council meetings from occurring?
Yes, I'm not sure. I'm not sure, Jim. Discussion, Vogel.
McKnight.
Aye.
Myers.
Aye.
Rea.
Aye.
Vogel.
Aye.
Kinder.
Aye.
All right, so now we are at, where are we at? E. Yes, we're at, okay, resolution, authorized transfer of liquor license from West Mead Township to the City of Meadville by Allegheny College. Motion?
So, council, I wanted to make sure I was clear, and I had to review the minutes that you approved earlier tonight. So this was on your last meeting's agenda. It was moved and seconded to be tabled, but tabled to this meeting specifically. So it's actually off the table tonight, so it would require only, it does not require a motion to take off the table. It just requires a motion to, a motion, a second to approve, if council is so inclined. Before the meeting, I actually thought it would require two motions.
Right, right.
But in reviewing the minutes, because it was tabled to a date specific, this meeting, it just requires one motion. Just Katie and I were comparing notes ahead of the meeting, and I just wanted to be clear on that. So when you're calling for a motion, it would be a motion to approve, not to take off the table.
Okay, so this would be a motion to approve. Is there a motion? Okay, so then, okay, I guess this would be a motion to deny.
Motion.
Paul, second.
Discussion.
Should we read that?
Do you want me to read it in its entirety?
Yes.
A resolution of the Council of the City of Meadville, County of Crawford, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, denying transfer of restaurant liquor license, license number R17066, into the City of Meadville from West Mead Township. Resolved by the Council of the City of Meadville that whereas Act 131 of 2000, which amends the Commonwealth's liquor code, authorizes the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board to approve or deny in certain instances the transfer of restaurant liquor licenses across municipal boundaries. Though within the same county, regardless of the quota limitations provided for in Section 461 of the liquor code, if sales of liquor and malt or brewed beverages are legal within the municipality receiving the license. And whereas prior to the transfer of a restaurant liquor license as referenced above, the receiving municipality is required to adopt a resolution or ordinance approving the transfer of a license from outside the municipality to inside the municipality. And whereas Allegheny College has requested the approval of the City of Meadville for the proposed transfer of Pennsylvania amusement liquor license number R17066 to facilities located within the City of Meadville and operating under the name of Allegheny College, with the understanding that said transfer must be approved at a later date by the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board. And whereas amendments to the liquor code stipulate that prior to adoption of a resolution by the receiving municipality, at least one public hearing be held for the purpose of permitting interested parties to state their concerns regarding the transfer of a restaurant liquor license into the receiving municipality. And whereas notice of a public hearing was advertised on April 6 and April 13, 2022, in the Meadville Tribune, a newspaper of general circulation for the City of Meadville, and a public hearing was held on this matter on April 21, 2022, as required by the Pennsylvania liquor code prior to the adoption of this resolution. And whereas it is understood pursuant to 47 PS, Section 4-461A, that the license, if approved, may not be transferred out of the City of Meadville for at least five years after the date that the licensed premises are operational in the City of Meadville. Whereas council notes that the testimony at the public hearing in this matter included the following relevant testimony for consideration by council. One, Allegheny College President, Dr. Hillary Link, testified to multiple reasons that Allegheny College desires to have the liquor license located on Allegheny College's campus, including promotion of student community, as well as offering responsible socializing and alcohol consumption between students, faculty, and guests in a controlled and monitored environment. President Link noted that many colleges competitive with Allegheny College have liquor licenses and offer such amenities, and as such, Allegheny College desires to offer a similar amenity to its current and prospective students. Two, at the public hearing, council also heard testimony from city residents and business owners opposed to the transfer of the liquor license. One city resident owning property on Highland Avenue near Allegheny College described multiple incidents involving Allegheny students disturbing the peace in his neighborhood, which included at least one altercation between students on his property, and expressed concern over the negative effects of alcohol sales on the college campus. Another city property owner expressed concerns related to late-night noise that might increase due to having alcohol sales on campus and its potential negative effect on the neighboring residential area, as well as safety concerns regarding locating a liquor license near an elementary school and daycare. Finally, a city business owner of a bar and restaurant testified as to his concern that the approval of the transfer would be competitive with his business, and that private business owners were better equipped to service Allegheny College students. While acknowledging Allegheny College's desire to have a liquor license on campus, council finds that the concerns of city residents and business owners are credible and justified, and that the transfer of the liquor license to Allegheny College would raise legitimate safety and noise concerns. Council finds that there is a likelihood that the neighboring area would be negatively impacted by such proposed liquor license transfer into the City of Meadville. Now therefore be it resolved based upon the testimony presented at the public hearing, that the Council of the City of Meadville hereby finds that the transfer of the subject restaurant liquor license into the City of Meadville by Allegheny College will negatively and adversely affect the welfare, health, peace, and morals of the municipality of the City of Meadville and its residents. Therefore, the Council of the City of Meadville hereby denies the proposed transfer of amusement liquor license number R17066 by Allegheny College into the City of Meadville.
There's a multiple page. Okay, Vogel. McKnight.
Aye.
Myers.
Aye.
Rea.
Aye.
Vogel.
Aye.
Kinder.
Aye. Sorry.
Sorry, yeah, sorry. All right, new business. Discussion, review of appointment policy.
So, council, this has come up just as a general, it's been about a year now that the appointment policy has been adopted. Included in your packets are comments from various boards and authority chairs, dependent upon which ABC they're part of, that kind of dictated their comments. For example, Devin Scott, who was the chair of the Market Authority, noted that he would like to see standards for review of candidates, some general questions and criteria, and some guidance in terms of appropriate questions and policies. Overall, it was very positive feedback about the appointment policy, but just for council's consideration, if they wanted to include any of those other items for any or all of the ABCs, such as guidelines, or questions, criteria, things like that.
Does anyone have any comments?
I would like to, like, to kind of work on the application. I just kind of, like, looking at it, I just felt like, please provide a re-statement as to why you wish to serve on, you know, on a board. I mean, it's not like we would do this now, but for me, I felt like it might be better to say, "Tell us why you want to wish to work on the board. Tell us more about your vision, goals, and outcomes." So I felt like it could be a little bit more, not so like police, and kind of like, you know, put a re-statement under, please state briefly your relevant qualifications, maybe just say, "Please, what's your relevant qualifications, experience, and or skills that you would bring to the committee?" So it just felt, that was the application.
So the question, I guess, is, would council like to see, maybe per Gretchen's comments, a cleaned-up version of, a more specific version of an application form? Council needs to address whether or not this is going to apply to all the PABCs, or if you want to focus on, like, the Market Authority, or another entity that specifically expends taxpayer dollars, how the council is to move forward.
Sorry, you're saying if this applies to all, this being...
With the change, or the appointment policy.
Because it already applies to all of our commissions and boards, right? Like, we have this appointment policy, which, if I may so comment, is like, you know, groundbreaking for Meadville. We've been using it for a while, and it's awesome, right? Like, that we have this appointment process, and we can, anybody can get on these boards. I think that's a great thing. Also, yeah, if we want to change them, and if we want, like, are you asking if they should be changed depending on, like, be different depending on if they spend taxpayer money, and if they don't? Like, should it be...
Correct. I guess the question is, do you want more specific criteria, more restrictive, in a sense, criteria for those authorities and board members who would spend taxpayer money, whoever vote on how taxpayer money is spent?
I think I'd like a cleaned-up version, right? Like, I want to, so that I can kind of sit with it a second? Do you know what I mean? Anybody have any?
I'm just, as far as a cleaned-up version, because that is the current adopted policy.
Of the application. I was just looking at...
That's the current adopted application.
Okay. So there is no clean-up.
I mean, that is... Like, Gretchen's saying?
Yeah. I mean, she's got, you've got your...
So, yeah, I mean, we can change wording, and I don't even know that staff needs to do that. Gretchen's got the wording, right? We can consider that. I think I'm not, I'm not so keen on, like, more stringent qualifications than are needed, but what maybe we could consider are, like, optional, right? Like, here's a set of questions that you might want to ask in an interview process. Here's a rubric, right, that you may want to consider, and the, or authority or commission could opt to use those resources that could be developed. We could give more thought to that. One change that I would maybe want to see, I didn't see this come from any chairs, but to the policy itself, I'd be interested in amending to something like, if a vacancy has been publicized in the last, like, three or six months, or something like that, that there'd be like a clause that we can just reach out to folks who applied the last time, so that maybe we don't have to hold ourselves to advertising again, and then going through the interview process. Like, the committee reserves that right, or the authority reserves the right to extend an information to folks who applied in the last six months.
What is, three months? Is that the current time?
There's no current time. So right now, you have to go through any, like, so I think just...
I'd say even as much as a year.
Sure, within the last year, if they want to. If they want a new pool of applicants, I think that that's fine. We can go through the process, but otherwise, yeah, I was gonna say, if they, like, step into that, and it feels humorous.
So if it's okay with council, staff will put together, will reach out to, probably some council members, Gretchen, for some comments, and then present something to council?
Yeah. Sounds good. Good idea. Thanks, Marion. Thanks, Katie, for the clarification. Resolution authorizing signatures, parking space lease agreement for outdoor seating City of Meadville and Javatree Cafe and Catering.
A resolution of the Council of the City of Meadville authorizing signatures on a parking space lease agreement for outdoor seating between the City of Meadville and Javatree Cafe and Catering.
Kind of a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Paul, second.
Discussion?
Council, this is an agreement with Javatree JT Steamtable for the use of two parking spots in the Market House parking lot. Typically, they have entered into this agreement with the city using Mulberry Alley. We did allow them last year when Mulberry Alley was being paved to use those two parking spots. It was very successful for them. The cost of this is based upon running from May to November, and then this is based on 25 cents per nine hours per day for five days a week for the 29 weeks. This is how we reached the cost.
And this is exclusive of Mulberry Alley. Mulberry Alley will not be closed off.
That's correct. Any other questions? Vogel.
McKnight.
Aye.
Myers.
Aye.
Rea.
Aye.
Vogel.
Aye.
Kinder.
Aye.
Resolution authorize signatures, general liability and property insurance policy renewal?
A resolution of the Council of the City of Meadville authorizing signatures on a general liability and property insurance renewal.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion?
This is what Tim worked on.
If I can just elaborate, Jim hit most of the major points. This is the general liability and property insurance of the city. It's renewable May 13th. Our goal was to have this quote in Friday so that we could get this packet out to you quicker. It's the nature of the beast. The underwriters pretty much control us by their quotes, but I think it was to our advantage. It was about 3:00 o'clock this afternoon, and we finally come up with the final quote, which essentially saved the city $19,000. So while, if you look at this, we tried to condense it into a lot of numbers, the bottom line is that selective and/or Travelers, both A-plus rated companies, very good. Beat Trydenow, who's our current one, by about $18,000 on the renewal. We did budget for about a 5% increase, so we would have been right on target of the $191,000. Some of the biggest things are Travelers, if you look at the bottom line, might be $1,000 less, but there's a couple of major issues with them. They wanted to set the parking garage value at 6.2 million. If the worst-case scenario was that it all fell down and we had to replace it, it certainly wouldn't cost just 6.2 million. So that's a kind of a concern. On the Kepler condos, they didn't quite understand that we only own nine spots on the ground, and we don't all, all 30 of them. So they were demanding, Travelers I'm talking about, was demanding that we do a replacement appraisal. So not an appraisal on the market value, but the replacement, which probably has talked with Jim, might cost 1,500 to 2,000, and probably wouldn't get us anything more. So comparing that to the fact that there's other deductibles on your employment practices, public officials' liability from a $10,000 deductible to only 2,500, we felt the $1,000 difference in the premium was well worth it to go with selective, and that's why we recommend that we go with them. I mean, I'll try to answer any other questions. I know there are just a lot of numbers on one page.
Right. Jim, a question?
Not a question, I guess.
Comments?
Comments? It is a comment. I'm feeling inclined to abstain, I guess, just, it wasn't in the packet, and it wasn't on the addenda I had, so I haven't looked at it. And so, is that, I mean, I'm not, like, feeling confident to vote, but it's not because I am not in favor. So I want...
It was difficult because it's a May 13th renewal, so we could have waited till the second meeting and did a ratification of it, but I felt good enough to give it to you in front of you now, and I know you're right, it was a last minute.
Yeah, no, I just think it's not in the digital, like, so I haven't seen it. So I'm just, I'm just, like, I will vote to abstain only because I haven't read it, but I want that to, can I do that? I can't?
So generally, you should only abstain for a vote if you have a conflict, so you could vote no.
Conflicted.
So you could vote no if you're not prepared to vote for it, if it gets called, if there's a motion, a second.
Okay. It's not because I'm against it.
Yeah, no, you just want to... It sounds like it. For a second. Am I, did I miss it too? Because that might have been my fault.
No, no, I literally, today about 3:00 was the finalized.
Did I my full, did I my thing? Oh, nevermind.
Here, anyhow, you just got one.
I just got a package. No, like, literally, I did not have a hard copy until 4:00. Okay. Just got, it's in the packets that we got here. Yes. Yeah. And I can't see it. And Jim, you just knew about it because you're on the finance committee?
I just heard about it from Tim this morning at 11:30.
Oh, okay.
I tried to review it with the finance committee, and again, I told him it's gonna be a last minute, unfortunately.
Yeah, no, no, I'm...
And he didn't even have the figures until after the two of us had talked. So it was probably about 1:00 when you actually got...
Some of the finalized figures, yeah.
Some of the finalized figures.
And then there was a couple of things that we... And then there was a couple of things that we needed changed, and it just took a little while for the underwriter to come back. It ended up being positive for the city, but unfortunately, we couldn't get it to you in time to back.
Right, right.
Katie, Katie updated the agenda on Monday to reflect, we knew that this was going to be an item, we just didn't have the final numbers. So it was updated as far as the agenda and posted to follow the timeline.
As the agenda, just not the meat of it here.
Correct.
Good news to council, I should look at the other one, because that's the one I end up looking at.
Okay.
So for purposes of Sunshine Act, that's why we're clarifying that.
Yes, yes, yeah, my.
Our agenda is.
Under Sunshine Act, we are.
Fine.
We're legal.
Good, Mike.
It's just, it's just, it was just a little information, unfortunately, to council.
Sorry to make this a thing.
Yeah, so I was just also, and I think there was two looking at it. I'm just going to see where we're at, we're at C here, right?
So, your honor, we do have a motion and a second? We're into the discussion.
Okay. All right, well. Roque.
McKnight.
Aye.
Myers.
Aye.
Rella.
Aye.
Vogel.
Aye.
Kinder.
Aye.
All right. Resolution to authorize signatures, award settlement agreement.
A resolution of the council of the city of Meadville authorizing signatures on a settlement agreement for the Edgewood Park subdivision.
I also move, second.
Discussion?
This is what council had agreed upon for the settlement that was discussed in executive session.
Right. Right. Does anybody have any, do we discuss? No. So, Roque.
McKnight.
Aye.
Myers.
Aye.
Rella.
Aye.
Vogel.
Aye.
Kinder.
Aye.
Okay, so it looks like council member statements. Yeah, they're, they're. Do you want me to ask? Okay, council member statements. Jim?
If you have any concerns or comments or questions about the climate action plan, please get in contact with us, write them down, communicate them by email, send us a letter, visit City Hall, and most of all, come to the meetings so that we can understand the concerns you have and act accordingly. Thank you.
The cleanup that we did on our Earth Day Saturday was a big success for Heidi Cooper and the woods around. We collected about, I think, 16 bags, garbage bags, two flat-screen TVs, a tire, a lot of boards and rubbish. And the walkathon was a big success, we did our, reached our goal of 25,000 steps, and so, good to go. Yay, Heidi Cooper Park.
Mary?
I'd like to thank everyone for coming. Yeah, like Jim said, you know, if you have questions or concerns about zoning or about the climate control, speak up, let people know your opinion, your feelings, because it affects everyone. And we've got less than 25 days of school left, so starting to pay more attention to the kids. Their minds are already on summer break, they're walking out in the streets, so just, when you're up by the high school or elementary schools, just be safe and be careful.
Yeah, to Jim and Larry's point, if you've got questions or if you're supportive of the climate action plan, please reach out, you should hear that too. Thanks. All right, I guess I want to thank everybody for coming. It's kind of a different type of meeting tonight, because we really had some discussions, right? And I, I don't hate that, right? Like, I liked having everybody involved, I want to thank everybody. Tim, your great work.
Thank you.
Gary, for rolling with the punches, because we seem to beat him up quite a bit, right? Sorry, Gary. Katie, thank you for clarifying. Yes, you are a good writer, I appreciate you. Our solicitors, right? Thank you for all the good advice you give us, and just the stance, you know, helping us figure out what we can and can't do, and of course.
Gretchen, have comments?
Oh, do you have one?
Oh, no, I did. She did, I didn't.
And Mary Ann, thank you, you do such wonderful work. And to everybody that comes, right, thank you for coming and doing the work you're doing and volunteering and really putting your opinions and what you want us to know out there, right? Because that's super important. And I think Meadville has a lot to say, and we can move forward, right, as a community, and that's what we want to do. We want to make sure that everybody is accounted for, and their voices are heard, regardless of what they own and what they don't. And I just, oh, there is the Black Diamond event this weekend, it's a diamond, so I hope people come out and support, you know, that event, it's kind of a cool thing, and I hope everybody has a good weekend and a good week, and hope to hear from you.
Happy Mother's Day.
Oh, yeah. Happy Mother's Day to everybody's mama.
The farmers markets start this weekend.
Oh, yeah, farmers market, Market House, everybody go down. And we've got some flowers for sale, right? Like, Market House has flowers for sale, so everybody go and buy flowers and support the market and the friends at the Market House and all of that good stuff. So now I will adjourn this meeting at almost eight o'clock.
To executive session.
To executive session.
To discuss real estate and personal.
All right, can I have a motion?
So move, second motion.
All right, discussion. Roque.
McKnight.
Aye.
Myers.
Aye.
Rella.
Aye.
Vogel.
Aye.
Kinder.
Aye.